Unfortunately, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance to the president. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united garden, in the physical with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks. So, our agenda is going to be some brief updates. And hopefully people can hear, they should know that they're giving them. And by Lisa, Steve Mulberg will be with us, but Lisa's going to give his update. Eric Kincher and Tonya. And the emphasis on briefs because we're really here to solve some problems. But I just thought it would be good if everybody had the same level of knowledge of what's happening with each of those respective disciplines. And then we'll jump into it. We've got three primary cat stories that we're going to work on. One is interdepartmental communication, how to improve interdepartmental intra and interdepartmental communication amongst ourselves. And how do we improve communication outwardly to the taxpayers and citizens? That's the second tranche. And then the third is the maintenance and, I'm calling it, optimization of assets of town buildings. So how do we make money out of the buildings that we've got and the assets that we have? We need to take care of them, but how do we get the money out of them as well? And perfect timing. So we're going to just kick it off with the updates and then then I'll turn it over to you for whatever opening remarks you want to make. Okay, great.
Alright, good evening, everybody. So I'm going to just provide an update from our IT director. He's unable to join us tonight, but just to let you know where he's on with our IT projects. To keep that off the website, so to all know that we are transitioning to a new web platform. Right now Strategic Solutions currently has a site map and is coming through. They're combining the links, the documents on the site map, so they're in that process right now. They're going to begin to reach out to the departments and the boards and committees to get input to see if the links and the documents need updates, the committee member updates, and what information needs to be removed or added. So you'll hear from Capital Strategic Solutions in the very near future on the website. He is VMware. They're in the middle of migrating over the VMware version 7 to version 8. I don't even know what happened, but maybe somebody did.
What changed?
Oh, Billy. While in the process, they discovered some issues with the second host server. And they've been working with HP to resolve the hardware issue. Right now he's waiting on parts to arrive, so the host is currently down. But I only got it most then changes in my ability to work. So the phones, as you know, Town Hall is upgraded to the new phone system finally. So we have Town Hall, fire station, senior central library. Migration is complete with the phone numbers in the system. Basically, all major hurdles have been accomplished. I think people are starting to see the improvement in the phones with the menus and the music on their hold. Let's see. Oh, I guess the next will be Highway, Camp Kowani, and then the police department as far as new phone systems. So those are on the way. Multi-factor authentication, they're working on completing that project, which is going to allow, I guess, web access through a BPM and the multi-factor authorization. He's also looking into grant opportunities to increase the licensing amount this year from 25 to 100. Maya, who's now our insurance carrier, is requiring us to have every desktop and laptop connected using the multi-factor authentication type of system. Training, there's more, they continue on training through Maya, through grants for cybersecurity training. He has sent out emails regarding all that, and then I sent out a not-so-popular memo about that. My apologies for that. It's really important for us to do the training. We do get grants from it, we get credits towards our returns. And that means that Maya continues to ensure its self-security. Barracuda, earliest year they migrated from on-premms Barracuda, SPAM Solutions, to a cloud version of Barracuda, which offers much more support, services, and protection from spam, malware, and phishing attacks. So that updates the IT. And next, I actually turn it over to Eric, our wonderful and brilliant accountant.
Oh, oh. Imagine. You put my brain in a carousel with flies and everything.
Well, carry it.
Alright. Alright, so we had this special Tommy Dean. After the dust settles, this is kind of where we're at right now. We have like 1.4 million in free cash, 1.4 million in stabilization fund, another 200,000 in the school stabilization fund for capital projects. We have 145,000 in Camp Kowani, retaining earnings here, and 772,000 in the ambulance fund. And 1.4 million in water supply plus balance. So I think we're in pretty solid shape. Now, if you remember last year, like the budget, when we started the budget, we're like 1.3 million and the whole way up to work through it. Some initial forecasts, I'm seeing like the same type of scenario for next year. We'll take a few tricks to get this balanced budget, but we have John Madden, who's doing like a five-year forecast for us. And I sat down with him. So the initial projections are, when we get out of the gate, once we get all the budgets and we're expecting probably like a 1.3 million dollar shortfall, and then we'll sharpen our pencils and see what we have to do. So that's what to expect. Here's another thing down the road from that. He has some other projections going down, which might be a little worse, but you know, the main thing is, last year we used like 357,000 in free cash, so that's non-recurring revenue. So that's contributing factor. And as these revenues and expenses project out, our revenue's been increasing probably like a solid like 3%, which is, you know, good. But the expenses have been trending up like 5.95%, so that's basically, you know, the difference. But I think we're in pretty solid shape. What I'd like to see and recommend is, since we have the free cash, right now we have like 1.4 million in the stabilization fund. I think right off the bat, we should consider put 200,000 in the stabilization fund. Bump that back to 1.6, we'll have it in there. Then let's work on the FY25 budget together. I think that would be a good idea. And the reason I think it's a good idea is because if it's in the stabilization fund, it's solid, and we wouldn't be subject to the fluctuations of free cash, because that goes up and down. This will have some solid numbers. So that's where we're at. Look forward to the budgets coming in, check it out. As far as the special Tommy Dean postings go, I've created all the accounts today. So you should see those account numbers, you know, within the next week for all your articles that were going to have special Tommy Dean. Oh, lastly, does most everybody have access to software to look at the financials? Because I just want to mention, the more eyes and ears are on the books, the better. And I actually like that. Like, for instance, like, oh, check this out, I don't think this is right. But it's good, because we're all, if the books are wide open, you're going to have like a better product in the end. And I appreciate all that. So that's it, that's my update.
Now, I'd like to turn it over to our town planner, Tony DeFrayes. Again, another brilliant employee that we have working with us, who updates us every day.
So FY23, we filed for some of the one-stop program. We received a grant for pedestrian improvements down on Main Street and around the train station. We have a company called Verdantis that's doing the work on behalf of the town. They did a drone survey back in June. They have created a preliminary design, and they also have sent me a copy of that preliminary design with cross-sections that are 250 feet, so that design process is underway in full effect. We also received a grant towards the master plan. And Old Collin Planning Council will be assisting the town with that. So Old Collin Planning Council met with the planning board back in August to kick off the process. The plan was created, a steering committee comprised of five members, two from planning, one from ConCon, two from the public, which we're still waiting for volunteers from the public. But at least with three members, we have a quorum, and we can move forward because this process needs to be completed by the end of June 2024. We're, I've met with a, Rhiannon Duggan, and to discuss the master plan and how to move forward as far as, say, get the public involved and get a comment back. The MBTA zoning, we kicked off a public hearing with the planning board on the 11th of September. We've received a second grant from the Mass Housing Partnership of just under $20,000 to assist us in completing the work for compliance. They've assigned a company, the VHB, who will be working with myself to get this, that process completed. I am actually meeting with them on the 20th here at Town Hall, and then we're going to go down to the site where we're sort of proposing the district to take a look. And then we'll also have a preliminary draft of the zoning that would address the MBTA area. It's based on a template provided by the Commonwealth. I've applied for a grant under the Complete Streets Program, because we're eligible. It's a half million dollar grant, and that would provide for improvements to the intersection of Liberty and Winter Street way up front of the Town Hall. The town had a prioritization plan. This happens to be number two on the list. Number one was County and Liberty Street, which is already done. So looking at the list, you don't have to be sequential, you can pick whichever number you want. But it just so happened that this was going to be the best project to pursue. As far as the FY24 one-stop grants, I should be hearing some information within the next coming days on the results of those grants and see what, if any, that we receive. And that's what I have.
And if I may add, so also to the town, we'll be applying for the Green Communities Grant. The application is due this Friday, working with OCPC to complete the application. And we are focusing on new heating pumps for the Town Hall. We had the Town Hall, whether I was for the last round, Green Communities, which prepared us for this one here, so that will be in the works as well. And also, we're putting on two hybrid police cruisers. They will provide you with a $5,000 grant towards the purchase of those, which is reimbursed, but we're adding two of those on the application as well.
Which we need. It's not like we're just randomly getting them, I mean.
Oh, right, yeah.
We need them.
We need to, I see older cruisers, we need newer hybrid cruisers, which is part of Green Communities.
Okay, awesome. Did you have any other updates you wanted to give, Ms. Green?
Oh, yeah, actually too, I applied for a Community Compact Grant for, to have a capital improvement plan, a professional one actually done. We awarded the grant, I've been working with Frank Malisi and the Collins Center on preparing a community, a, I'm sorry, a capital improvement plan that looks similar to North Borough. So if you all want to just Google North Borough on Monday, and you're on Sunday afternoon and you have nothing else to do. The document is very, very nice, very professional, relevant. We've got huge pictures and a description of the capital. So we said we really wanted to have something similar to that, so we will be working on that. The Excel spreadsheet that people are used to will now be a complete, full document with pictures and descriptions and things like that.
Okay, so that one. So once we get the information from the Collins Center, we'll figure out if it's a cap. We'll create a full run of that, if they seem fit. One thing that's going to be required for that is a lot of, first, a lot of department, a lot of department helping us with that. We're going to need to take pictures of equipment that follow the capital improvement guidelines, fire trucks, police cars, echo, stuff like that. Once the original project or capital improvement plan is there and done, there'll be moderate updates every year after that. And the whole point of this update on this community, on this capital improvement plan, is to provide the town a better overall picture of what exactly, on behalf of capital, is what, you know, a truck from the highway actually looks like, you know, or what, you know, an ambulance, everyone knows what an ambulance looks like. What an ambulance looks like, the world looks different. So there'll be some coming information in the next couple of months, and involvement with the departments will be very appreciated.
Also, so just our social media. Steve Mulberg and Theresa have been doing a great job with Facebook, supported by Capital Strategic Solutions. There's a bunch more information being out there. They're also working with some of the other platforms with social media, so a lot more information is getting out there. The newsletter, which was first introduced just within the town, but it has now, it's external as well. So the newsletter for October will be coming out soon. And then we're already focusing on the content for November. November, I thought it was a perfect time to spotlight our new veterans agent and the work that he's been doing since on board, since Veterans Days in November. And also, since November is when our assessor works very hard to get the tax rate set and submit all that information to the DOR. So the assessor also will have a little squad in the newsletter to let people know what's going on with that information. And if there's anything else that anybody wants to submit for the November newsletter, please let me know, just send me an email, and I will send it to Capital Strategic Solutions that puts everything together for us. So we're really, we're making strides from where we were as far as public engagement, getting information out there. We still have a ways to go, but where we are today from where we are a couple years ago is by far a huge improvement.
Okay, great.
Question, when is the dev wanting to get that information in?
They haven't, they actually, they haven't sent out the information, you know, like, email yet. So if you have it in the next like week or two, send it over to me.
Alright, great. With that, then, we will turn it over to you guys. They remember Anne Donner, who was facilitating our last couple of sessions, and she agreed to do it again. The lavado was successful, and she agreed. So Anne will hand it over to you.
So it's coming in. Ms. Fitzgerald Kennedy, you were talking about the various groups. And I just, I want, I want you to repeat them again, because what we're going to do is, we want to advance those areas that you described. And we're going to, this time, we're going to break out into those groups. The last time, we had folks that followed in groups that they were involved in when we had a strategic planning retreat. But now we need everyone's innovation, and that's kind of the theme of this, is to look at particular challenges or issues and to sort of speak outside the box. And we sort of encourage you to go into or be involved in areas that may not necessarily have been involved with before, because it's that outside thinking that's going to really help advance our work in these areas. Very much like when I was listening to Ms. Green's report, it was really, you know, because I've been sort of checking in tremendously, and there's a lot that's been accomplished. And it's, this is kind of an ongoing process. And we can, we can continue to use that thinking that went into the initial strategic plan throughout. And so we want to apply that same innovation, creativity, new ideas into these particular areas. So if you, I don't want to describe, I have written down on my notes in our conversation.
So there's basically three groups. Inter and intra departmental communication, how do we keep each other updated? Make sure that, you know, no man is left behind on communications. So that everybody knows what's going on, and we're acting in a united way so that when we're dealing with citizens or even with one another, everybody's got the information they need to do their job. So that's one piece. Then the other piece is, how do we tell, a lot of great work is happening. We're doing a lot of amazing stuff, like, I see it every day and all day. You know, practically every time I'm talking to somebody, I'm like, oh my God, that's amazing. How do people know we're doing this? So how do we leverage all the stuff that you guys are doing? Take a minute, take a beat, and make sure we're getting that information out there. Part of that is the newsletter, but on a more of an ongoing basis. You know, how do we leverage social media and other ways to let people know? How do I get information? How do I do things? You know, here's what the people that work for the town are doing for you. Here's what the volunteers, who are volunteering for the town, are doing for you. Just so that people are seeing, you know, the activity out there. And I think that's part of the way that we're going to be able to engage people, is people really want to be on a winning team. They want to be part of, you know, a group that they think is making a difference. And historically, for years, we've suffered and not been able to get enough people to volunteer and engage. So sort of that one is like outward communication slash engagement. How do we get more people sitting in the seats at town meetings? You know, other than coming up with controversial articles that, you know, like are lightning rod for certain groups. That's, you know, not really a sustainable or particularly responsible way to do it. So how do we, you know, how do we engage? So we've got the interdepartmental, intradepartmental, that's one. Citizen engagement slash communication. And then the third is, I'm making this, like, optimization of town assets is what I'm calling it. And maintenance, right? Because what I see is we have a bunch of buildings that we, the town owns, and I don't think we've got any plans, other than what the individual department heads may have for the building. I don't think we've got any vision, any prioritization, any strategy for what needs to be fixed now, tomorrow, five years from now, 10 years from now. And this speaks to Frank's situation, Frank and the rest of the capital improvement committee, which is, these things are predictable. These things are not, you know, yes, occasionally there's going to be a rooftop that falls off, and we need to get, we couldn't have predicted that, you know, a windstorm is going to do it. But by and large, we can predict that, you know, five years from now, we're going to need a new roof. You know, six years from now, we need a new HVAC system. I'm making this stuff up, but the point is, we need to have a vision and a plan so that we're not flying by the seat of our pants and, you know, having times when we're saying, well, maybe you guys won't get, you know, won't have AC all summer, because we need diors on that roof. That, you know, I'm painting a dire picture, but anyway. Optimization of town assets, how do we make money off of what we have? Including land, including buildings, rentals, leases, et cetera, et cetera. And then how do we maintain those buildings? So that we're good stewards and we're using taxpayer money efficiently and not doing huge costly fixes or tear downs because we didn't take care of it in the first place. So I know that was way, that was way more than I said the first time, but.
So what I'm going to ask is that we're going to sort of create three groups. And the task is, for each group, is to, someone to volunteer to be the facilitator, like we've done in the past. And either that person or somebody else in the group, they can ask somebody to be sort of the note taker. And the way I suggest to approach it is to kind of state like the problem that you're solving for. And that's a big list of issues for each of them. But as a group, to sort of define what you're going to be solving for, because there's a lot of components in each of those. And then to sort of think about, I mean, I want to say pretend, you're coming in like from the outside and without any preconceived, well, we tried that, it didn't work, you know, let's, you know, because we'll get stuck with that. It's to really think in the way that you have successfully done in the past, you know, be innovative. Like how, like, you know, I'll use the example of external communication as a means to get people excited and civically engaged. If they don't know what's happening, and I think that when I heard about like the, sort of the publication of capital, you know, expenses and pictures of things, that gives people interest. Something that's exciting rather than, you know, like why they should be civically engaged, because we have our act together. Like, people don't join clubs or wards because they're not getting something done. And a lot's happening, they're doing it because they feel like some, like this is an organization that I want to be involved in, and the same thing goes for the Town Hanson. So I'll use that as an example. So, you know, what's the problem we're solving for? And what are some very, like, specific actions that are practical, okay? You know, sort of making cost, you know, you know, either cost neutral or marginal to achieve, you know, an answer or solution or ideas to address it. Alright, so it's sort of, if you come out with like an idea too, that seems like we could actually do this, that's great, then we've got something to go on. Does that make sense?
And so what, how much time are we going to, what's our time structure?
Why don't we say, like, 40 minutes? Is that, and then we'll have, after that, let's say, it's seven o'clock now, say 30. I mean, I, like, we're trying to, we're going to try to conclude at eight, correct?
Yeah, maybe do 30 minutes, just, and then do a sanity check at 30.
Yeah, okay, so let's go from, yeah, so let's go until like 7:35. And so I want to make sure that we're sort of divided amongst, there's an equal distribution of people. So look around, and I'm just going to say, why don't we say, this corner of the table will be for internal, you know, intra-city, intra-town communications. Okay, so that's. Facilitator, great. Pull-up chairs and, you know, and then we can have this, like, this section. And you can order if you want, but we'll say, you know, here, we'll have, this will be like external, okay? You know, sort of communications external. And then over, somewhere over here.
Over this way for capital.
What?
I was kidding, I said over this way for capital.
Well, I mean, you can, like, wherever you want to assemble it. But then on the third group, I'm just going to point in this direction that, that sort of, you know, asset, you know, investment and maximization, like over on this side. Okay?
And just to the extent that this might happen, that one group might be particularly more popular than another group, we might have to redistribute a little bit.
Yeah.
Like, I, I, you know, we could just do optimization and maybe insights of the buildings, which I feel like most of the guys.
The style, the style, the 2-3.
Yeah, right. Alright.
Do that.
Alright, so this, yeah, that corner is going to be optimization of town assets.
Okay.
That's.
Internal, like, internal communications.
This is external.
And this is external. Okay, so let's. So what I'm going to ask you to do is say like what you're, like what you're solving for, and then, you know, what you came up with.
Okay, so what we're, our group was solving for was external communication. I guess we're talking about communication. Could we get, could we get a, like a big screen TV put in here so we can punch up our computers?
Yeah, I'll come out and see them, put in the capital plate.
So one of the issues that we have at Town Hall is obviously getting information out to the public, so that people know what's going on. So we tried to come up with some ideas of how can we tackle that and improve that. So obviously, being in the 21st century, social media is the big one. Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, question mark, because of the whole political scene there. And then of course, net following for this, Twitter. The second thing we came up with was something that we're already utilizing, which is the signboard, the flash of signs, so we let people know what's going on in town. Maybe we, you know, improve that with a little more information on much more things that are going on. Third thing is obviously we have the newsletter and tying it to the town website. Fourth, we came up with is also putting information in the Whitman Hansen Express. The fifth one is utilizing the Whitman Hansen cable access and, say, creating public service announcements that can go to YouTube and basically spotlight the departments, the various departments in town. Highway, conservation, planning, water health, and what do they do? So, you know, maybe we could have PSA that explains what do these departments do? What part of regulations, zoning, you know? What is, what do they do? When would you need to come see them? What's going on in these particular departments, in particular projects? Or if they're looking for volunteers for their commission, water health, or in our case, the planning board, the master plan steering committee, we're looking for two members of the public. Then we also figured, number five, is you take these PSA. Then we also figured, number five is you take these PSAs and you sort of link them up to that social media. So you can not only have them on the Whitman Hansen YouTube, but, you know, tie them into the social media, all the different social medias to that, and you get further exposure to the public. Number six, we thought was, you have open house for schools, for your children, so why not have an open house at Town Hall? You know, once, twice, three times a year, whatever. So that the public can come in and say like a Tuesday night and go to each department and get an understanding, in-person understanding of what, what is going on, what these departments do. Or maybe you can even have a project that they're thinking of. They can come in and speak to department heads or the admins and get some information. Seven is an information kiosk at Town Hall. And that could either be, whether it's print or print in media. So that folks could get a night, you know, if they don't want to interact necessarily with people, they can go to a kiosk and look through and see what's going on in the projects. So like taking the big bulletin board that we have at Town Hall for posting meetings, sort of maybe an electronic kiosk. Another thing we need to do is, that was brought up, was how can we get more people involved at town meetings? And obviously, as we all know, we're all at the town, like anywhere, like the country, like the state, where it's aging. So we need to get the younger people involved. And how do you do that with town meetings? You need to get younger citizens involved. And I think that may have been brought up at different past strategic meetings is, that probably needs to stop maybe through the schools, you know, trying to reach out to the school system and getting younger people involved in the local politics, or at least how the government works and maybe see it firsthand. Because at some point, they're going to become voters and the, you know, Hanson, like many towns, has one of the last ones in democratic government. It's the people that vote. Number nine is, what if we created a local news program? Think of SNL, obviously not as extreme, not as extreme, but, you know, something along those lines. Let's say had, was suggested maybe the kids from the high school, the media department, something like that. Put on, you know, hey, this is what's going on in Hanson. And last was taking all these social media links and getting them put on our town website. So that people can have a one-stop shop, if you will, on how to get information. And then obviously, you know, these things, it's something we have, not just to do once, but we have to stick with it and keep it updated. So that's what we came up with as far as external communication.
I'm just going to ask, so this group, how do you see any of these elements? Like what would be the next step on this? Like, could this be something that, you know, that perhaps Lisa, that you look at? And sort of like, some things are in process or could be added to some existing issues that you're doing, but some of them might lie with somebody in another department? Is there sort of thinking about what are the next steps leading this meeting? I mean, I'm asking everyone.
Department meeting.
Yeah, Tony, I mean, certainly.
Yeah, I was going to say that considering that we're going to create a regular website, that this is the time to integrate this into that website versus trying to retrofit our existing. So I think number six, number eight, which I have a pretty hand to hand rate. Having younger citizens go do Town Hall tours and things like that and just tour different buildings around the town will be a really good way to kind of peak some of that, you know, obviously not everybody's going to be into the Town Hall, but it could be a citizens class that, you know, have the school program, reach out and ask those students to come and do a tour of Town Hall and give the, you know, top edge opportunity to talk to them and kind of go from there.
Interested in how we can get people who knew moving to town into this, to know what's happening in this? What's the Town Hall, what services are available to them?
Yeah, so what, I mean, that's something to think about when someone, you know, moves to Hanson. It's almost like a Hanson welcome K, right? They, you know, there's, there's some kind of permitting that's going to happen. Maybe it's when they, you know, they get their, I don't know, like, maybe it's sort of a, like a planning or zoning, you know, I don't know, like with the, the building department. But there's some, something that triggers that this new resident, whatever, whether they're signing up for a city service, that they get some information about how to in Hanson.
I think taxes are probably where we get more people. Taxes are where we get more people.
Yeah.
So I think a lot of this has to do with, you know, just getting people aware. And I think when it comes to town, municipal governments in town, there's a huge out of sight, out of mind type of mentality that just kind of inadvertently hits. And what I like about this town, especially with the people that are here right now, that these are people that are innovative, that are really organized, they're always going above and beyond, honestly, and they're really communicative and they can do things really transparently. We're very lucky in this town to have the people that we have. But one of the things that impresses you the most is, you know, I was saying this in the working with you there, is the way the fire department is able to utilize social media. They're not, they're always present. They find the right times to kind of get different things out. And it's not always like the most controversial thing that you kind of looking for the department's webpage. It's, they, it finds a way to find you. And then it makes you remember that they're there and that there are things happening, but it's not so oversaturated with posts that it just drowns out whatever's trying to be said from one thing to the next. It's like they hit the sweet spot. And they were talking about how it's, the posts are gathering. So I think a lot of this stuff, no matter what, it looks, it may look like it, it might be a long one. But I think data is the key. And I think what underlies all of the communication piece is what data points do we not even know that we need to be able to work more efficiently so that all of this stuff can happen more seamlessly, not feel like a chore because we're just trying to just pump up stuff? How do we just find the right spots? Because there is some type of algorithm out there that doesn't exist, it has to exist.
Yeah.
That allows us to just kind of do this. Because the highway department and the police department and the Town Hall and the schools are, they're just as important. They have so much going on themselves that people would be interested. And I think you would get more people at Town Meeting, all these different places, if we weren't inundating with information, but we also aren't so, you know, you know, dry with it. Dry with it for most. So I think data is the key.
That's, that's a great idea.
I think one of the things I like about this kind of plan, and I think, you know, it would be a great discussion in a department, I think, on, you know, how to, how to execute on some of these, is that it gets people in different ways. Some people pick up the newspaper, that's how they get their information. Some people haven't read a newspaper in their entire life or not recently. And they get it all, their news on Facebook, God love us. And, and then, you know, there's other people who may be up at 2:00 AM in the morning looking at cable. You know, and they may see it there. So I like, you've got to, I agree with what Joe's saying. You need to try to find a way to make it simple and not more engineering, like not killing it with a can.
Yeah, well, maybe that's something, and I don't know, it is something perhaps the web, it may not be their specific, like scope of daily work, but there's like, I'll call them like customer programs, customer relationship programs and, or CRMs, customer relation management. And they, that's kind of what that we're talking about. Because CRM will sort of pick up even like what people are interested in. And, and sort of like judiciously more, it's like we all, we all get it, right? It's like, gee, look at, you know, a shoe catalog online and guess what, you know, we're on that. But it could be that people are indicating an interest in a particular area. It could be the public schools, it could be their interest in the environment, they're, they're sort of, they clicked on something for the highway department, but it's a way to like, so they're not inundated, they're sort of getting information of things they're interested in. So it might be something to just have a quick conversation and ask some of those folks that do social media and, you know, that CRM work as to how you might go about doing that. But I think those are great ideas. Excellent. Good work. Okay, so we're going counterclockwise.
All right, so we're doing internal communications. And one thing that we talked about, it actually comes down, we're down here, we have, we'll call it an ad hoc group. For a couple of months now, we've been meeting weekly and it turned into something that we're going to continue on between fire, building, water health, the town administrator. And it's actually been very well received within our department, but I know with their department, so, hey, here's what's going on down the street, you know about this permitting, things like that. We've been able to actually fix a bunch of things before they become issues. So one thing that we talked about to help open up communication amongst the town departments, it says weekly, but monthly meeting between the departments. And it doesn't have to be just the department heads. We get the department head meetings for that. I'll give you a great example, we've got a new fire prevention officer, which I'll get quoted. Lieutenant Malley took it all with she's, the one that would be dealing with, I shouldn't be dealing with, but working with the library, working with the senior center, things like that. But it's very easy for Mary, I think she's been doing this so long, and child Mary, just, we'll pick up the phone, text each other, hey, here's what's going on in the senior. But this would help get down to tenants, engage a little easier with them. But also too, the other ones up and coming, and it's helping probably most of our departments right now. But it doesn't have to be you that goes to this meeting, it can be some other group of departments just saying, hey, here's what's going on in the fire department, or here's what's going on in highway, libraries, senior center, things like that. One thing I did put in there, when we talk about reverse end this far, that we talked about is actually the school district. Because there's a lot of resources out there that departments, and we've done very good with it in the last few years, are sharing amongst each other, but the school district has resources that the town can use and the town has resources that the schools can use. But also too, like we're talking about social media and things like that. Everybody, my department will tell you, I have not touched the social media stuff. So thank you for what you say, like other people do that stuff for us. But that's what we get the young people, if they know how to do that and they can help. Oh, you want to put a video, you got a run thing? Oh, we can help you do all that kind of stuff. So that's why going to the schools is part of that monthly meeting. It's great, and the thing is, it's not a one or two hour, maybe a quick 30 minutes, here's what's going on, coffee. And have each department posted so they, you know, at Town Hall all the time. You're at Town Hall, you're at the fire station, police station, highway department, the water department, the school, the library, the senior center, you know, places like that, so that everybody gets to kind of see what's going on. And I think it helps also amongst the departments of, hey, we've got to ask for a new HVAC system. Oh, you know something, we do too, we collaborate and get a better pricing, we can now do two instead of one, you know, things like that. So moving it around, and the big thing for us is networking. It's getting all of our employees to network together. So because police and fires, we're going to see each other during emergency calls of time. But we can network outside a little bit, we do, but this is a better opportunity for people to get to know the building inspector, or get to know planning department and things like that. Because at least for the fire department, only a small fraction of us know who the planning department is. And eventually a conversation with them and things like that. So that's some stuff to talk about. Regular internal common emails. So one thing that did come up in this, actually might be something that I know IT has talked about is, some people have access to town emails, some people don't have access to town emails. Because I know in our department alone, some people utilize their own personal emails. They don't have a town email address. But, but with that, being able to push up, hey, here's what's going on in the fire department, here's what's going on with line stripe in town, you know, with the highway department or the water department, two and flushing or anything like that. And one thing that we talked about with it is having some kind of shared calendar that we're able to put up, that all the departments are able to look because we, you know, after hours, police and fire, and then we come to catch all for, hey, there's something going on on my water's ground. Okay, well, there's a water main break where they're all flushing hydrants, you know, just to use that as an example. And it's something that we're able to look at the calendar for it and be able to see it on there. But also too, that calendar may be able to be public access. So that somebody can look at, you know, oh, there's an open house at the fire department, there's an open house at Town Hall, there's a slot going to be, oh, they're line striding on Route 27 tonight, you know, that kind of stuff. So it helps just kind of push that out out there. What else do we have in there? Telephone calls from citizens. It is a lot of common questions, at least that we see in our department. Because we'll, we'll get some stuff that people will call us, ask about Woodsove. Always ask about distances and things like that for Woodsove. That's actually not a fire department thing, that's for the building department. But wait, we know that's a common one that we're getting. That might be something that right there needs to go on the town website. Because Kerry might not think it's a big one, but we, that's a common question that we get that's outside of our department. You know, things like that. And having that communication amongst towns, you know, we got a lot, there's a lot, something to put on the town website for it. Let's see, what else do we have on there? And then one question we have for IT is, Ed brought this up, Mr. Hill brought this up, a great question. We get a call at Town Hall and it's something about, hey, do I check out a library? Do we now have the capability of pointing that person on hold, pushing a button, it calls the library right away? Hey, we get somebody asking a question about a library, I can transfer it to you. So I think that technology now exists, I believe so. But again, that's something that we need to look at, just so that it makes it easier for everybody to be able to send, because you don't want, like we talked about, for the citizens that they call, and I know this gets a little outside of the internal communication, but when a citizen calls, you don't want to get stuck in that phone tree and explaining it to three different people. But safe to deal with the town departments, because there's some kind of questions that we come up with. Or we're looking at some permitting stuff and we might go to, there's only a question that relates, you know, planning question or something like that. So, anything else I missed that I do? We're pretty ready on the yes, huh?
Um, we'll look into, from my perspective, I think that every town employee needs to have a town email. I think it's a very dangerous precedent on a number of different levels for anybody to be using their personal email. So we will look into that. And then I think in terms of the transferability of phones, probably lots of everybody's up on the same phone system, but I doubt that's right now, because not everybody's up on it, at least everybody in town. But, yeah.
But if you want to do the medium one, call us the first one. Mr. Weeks was supposed to speak to this, but he. Mr. Ma, I said I like to speak to myself. I was delegated by Joe. Are we all behaved now? Asset optimization. So the inventory and the assets and the condition, we ask ourselves three different questions. Is it serving a public purpose? What are the maintenance costs? And if we're not using it, is there an opportunity to rent, lease or sell? On top of that, we have somebody who actually does all of the facility management and gives us a good overview of the town assets and how they're conditions. And that would be a facilities manager or a facilities director, probably. Outsource, you know, the, the, the maintenance of the buildings with proceeds that you can get if there's a possibility to rent, sell or lease any buildings. And then a big one that we're really excited about apparently is land. And having land that the town owns possibly being not only an immediate financial gain from the sale of the land, but also recurring revenue from taxes that will be gained from selling that land and into another, for another person. And then the net present value is something that a senior accountant brought up about, you know, is, is the maintenance item that we're going to be doing. Might be worth $400,000 to replace all the windows, as an example, but it'll save us $30,000 a year in heating costs. And is, is that a formula that we can use for all of our town assets? Yeah, that's pretty much it, so.
Thanks.
Lisa, I think I'm curious, when was the last time at, I know this is a long and old question, I think I know, it's been a while, since we've done a comprehensive assessment of the, of the buildings? And what is needed and, you know, like, I know one was done, maybe 10 years ago, I want to say, it could have been longer. And it basically obviously said highway, you know, sort of being placed. And then it had various other categories. But I, I think it's important because we need to prioritize how we're spending money to fix up buildings and we need to take care of the worst case scenarios first. So I think, can you look into maybe revisit and freshen up a bit? Or we can take a line on the list.
We can take a line on the list, okay. I can work with our building inspector on that as well. I have the roads are facilities.
And also in through you, Ms. Pelosi, so were you. And also, and through you, Mr. Wilson, so were you guys suggesting the creation of a facilities manager position that would be responsible for sort of overseeing, is that what we?
Yes. But then also, on second, on second glance, also the land is also something that we can do pretty immediately, right? If we have a list of land and we have a list of the abutters that own that land, there's an opportunity for us to cover those abutters first and say, you know, this is a piece of property that's landlocked, we'll sell it to you for this amount of money, an acre or two. An acre or two could bring in an extra eight to a thousand dollars of tax revenue every year from that person instead of us just having to have folks who lose their money.
So that could be sort of the low-hanging fruit, the early kind of action type of thing?
Just teasing, I did do a report on that.
Oh, you did.
That was for the inspiration for that.
Yeah, so we're doing the communication thing too.
So I do have, I do have, I do have the report in my office, if anybody.
Yeah, that's great.
I have it electronically too, so.
So we've got doing, you know, the idea of having, having like an inventory done, an assessment, and then, you know, sort of moving or advancing the information that Tony has to look at, you know, contacting abutters. Can we do that?
I think you probably have to go through the procurement process.
Procure, okay, yeah, so, yeah.
Well, the select board would be, the select board would make the decision first, like, these are the pieces of property. Yeah. And then the economic development committee's also been like working on that because one of the pieces is in the investor part. And so it's got the potential to be, you know, sold or, you know, and then developed and then have some taxes come in on a regular basis. But really, it wasn't until Mr. DeFrays did this analysis that we even knew that we owned it. So.
The one thing before the select board can actually, the conservation commission has the, has the underwriting article that will put the county to review all those properties, determine if they're not. So we did, we actually did go through that, where there's actually two properties that were on a, that were not meeting, that were on that list, that conservation.
Yes, Ms. Donner, people are like raising the, so I'm not the chair for tonight, like it's.
Yeah, no, there, yeah, I see.
Okay, so something about, for internal communications, it actually, it's not about that, I don't want to talk about it. Is, is there a way, IT-wise, that we can create a way called Google Drive that like the documents that Tony has, he's able to put in? And then any documents, now again, there's some documents we can't run on Google Drive, but like you were speaking, stuff can go on there, but he's got building designs and water health, and subject designs for a fire department.
Internal, like, you know.
Sure. Correct, an internal sharing.
Well, but you probably would secure, right, that's sort of an, yeah, so that's.
Internal.
And like sort of, like internal documents that on this, like a secure server.
Yes.
Right, that people have permission, like permissions to access.
Yep. And you can exclude.
Sorry.
But you can even exclude, sorry, for all, you know, for your, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Was there another, you know, I think Mr. Fisher had this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but you could definitely do that too, obviously, by creating a shared one site, put the files out there, and then you can give permissions to certain people, to people. So you can definitely do that. But one thing I was excited about this group was they, you know, a couple of good ideas. Like the fact of getting the land back on the capitol somehow, if it's not used, you could be trading a steady stream of revenue. And then if you hire like a facilities director that's in charge of maintaining the assets, but possibly maybe leasing or renting if it's applicable, you could probably create a revenue source that would actually fund that position. So I thought that was good thinking.
And I just want to put out that facilities manager director, and that came out, I think that, you know, that came out a couple of meetings ago. Yeah, every, every meeting.
Every meeting does seem to come up.
It does seem to come up, it seems. Any other questions of other committees or comments or?
I just, I mean, I appreciate everything that all of you guys do all the time. And I think Mr. Weeks said it earlier, we're lucky, we're so lucky, like we've got a lot of really great people and doing a lot of above and beyond. Even if you're an employee, I know you're going above and beyond, or if you're a volunteer, you're giving hours of your life and never getting back, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you guys, and I appreciate people being here. But none of this is worth it, or the time that we put in if we don't execute on it. So I didn't mention to Ms. Green that I think the next step would be for the communication pieces to be discussed at departmental meetings to talk about how do you execute as a team? And then in terms of the asset optimization piece, clearly the select board needs to have more conversations about that. And I think, you know, it's, it's something, we've been pretty good about selling properties that come up for tax saving, but now we need to take it like a step further, to go delve a little deeper and look at the pieces of property that we own. And then look at, you know, our, you know, how do we increase rentals in Thomas Mill? How do we, what do we do with light control if we're not gonna use it for highway? What do we do with it? I mean, we own it, so what are we gonna do with it? How would we get Jameson into a, you know, new building, you know? And how do we prioritize all of the many, you know, I try to, I kind of have to shield my eyes sometimes going by some of the buildings, because I can see, you know, like I'll walk into Town Hall and I'll think, oh my God, those windowsills, you know, like, and, but I mean, we only have so many dollars and we only have, you know, so many priorities we can handle. So it's a matter of prioritization, revisiting, prioritizing, revisiting and prioritizing. Similarly, I did mention to Ms. Donner today that I think, you know, we've gotten a lot of really good feedback, and hopefully you guys have felt, like even just from, from the first meeting to now, some of the ideas that have come up, we have moved on them. Lisa has moved on them, the board has moved on them, you guys have moved on them. There's discernible progress. So I really loved the conversation about the interdepartmental things. I think a lot of times, and I know the select board's guilty of this, we get in our own swim lane and we're so well-intentioned about doing what we're supposed to be doing, that we don't think to say, wait a minute, did anybody else ever do this? Why are we recreating the wheel? Maybe somebody else has done this before, you know, and just kind of drop those barriers and just reach out to people. But you don't feel comfortable doing that unless you've maybe met them before or you've had these organic conversations. And so hopefully that's part of what this is about, is everybody getting to know each other. And I think it's time for us to probably revisit the strategic plan and figure out, is what we came up with last year still valid? Have we achieved a lot of things on that list? Do we need to look at other priorities? So I would just ask that you guys think about that. And we'll have, you know, we'll have some format, I don't know if it'll be a survey or if we'll torture her again by having her do the permanent, you know, like interviews and, you know, whatever. I don't know how we'll gather that, but we need to freshen it up because the strategic plan is only good at the moment in which it's development, it's developed, and then we have to keep saying, is this still relevant? Is this still where we're headed? Have we made progress on those things? And if we have, then what's our next priority? So I really can't express enough how much I appreciate everybody taking the time tonight to join us. Thank you so much. And with that, I will contain a motion to adjourn. Where are my people?